I need to call to order the May 9, 2016 Board of Education meeting. And our first order of business is to approve an agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment. I'd like to remove the report on the Lawrence School Area Traffic Control Policy. The city staff has asked to have an opportunity to review that before we have a discussion about it. So I anticipate that we will be putting that on an agenda for a future meeting. But that's the reason for suggesting that we remove it from the agenda this evening.
Great, and we're also going to reorder one of the reports. We're going to move up the report about the science standards in order to give the staff that are here to speak on that first chance to go so they can get them to their families.
Okay, so I include that in my motion then.
Perfect. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. So let's take a look here. The first item is special recognition. We have some Native American student ambassadors that we want to recognize this evening. And for that, I'll invite Andrea Spotted Horse up to the microphone. Along with her ambassadors. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Spotted Horse. I had previously worked for Native American Student Services and also part of the Johnson O'Malley Program. So while I was working there, the program created what's called the Indian Youth of Lawrence Program where there were four ambassadors selected to represent the Lawrence community as well as the school community. So tonight, we have two of them who weren't able to be with us due to other obligations that they had. The Miss Indian Youth of Lawrence, she is Shay White, and she's a senior at the Lawrence High School. And she's Pima and Navajo. And then there's Ronston McKinney, who also couldn't be with us. And he's the Indian Youth of Lawrence Brave. And he is a fifth grader at Schwagler Elementary School. And standing in front of you, you have both the junior Indian Youth of Lawrence. We have Evelyn Spotted Horse, Junior Miss Indian Youth of Lawrence. And she is a sixth grader at Central Middle School in Lawrence. And then we have Logan Spotted Horse, who is a third grader at New York Elementary. Now, part of being selected for the Indian Youth of Lawrence, they had to endure required hours of community service to get selected for the title. And they also had to obtain community references that spoke highly of them. Part of being an Indian Youth of Lawrence also means that they serve as a role model to the Native American community and the non-Native American community as well, where they get to teach part of the Native American culture. So with that, they've been selected for their positions since April of 2015 and will continue until August 2016, fulfilling their roles in Lawrence and at Native American events. So with that, we would like to have them go around and shake the school board's hand as...
Congratulations.
Yeah, you can go sit down. Okay. Thank you. All right, we just want to thank you for your time and allowing them to be here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have special recognition for teachers and classified staff with 25 years of service. And Anna Stubblefield and David Cunningham will help present with that.
Good evening. I'm Anna Stubblefield, Director of Human Resources. And assisting with me with tonight's presentation is Director of Human Resource and Legal Services, David Cunningham. David and I are pleased to join the University of Kansas in its tradition of recognizing educators celebrating 25 years of teaching. I would like to present KU certificates along with our sincere thanks to several Lawrence educators marking this milestone in their teaching careers. As you know, this is an especially busy time of the year. As a result, some of our honorees could not be with us this evening. However, they still will receive certificates. We would like tonight to thank publicly and congratulate 12 veteran educators who could be here. When I call your names, please come forward for your certificate and remain standing here at the front of the room until we've recognized the entire group. First, I would ask Lynn Aligo to come forward. Lynn's recognition is belated. She is celebrating 26 years of service to elementary students in Lawrence. In addition, she taught preschool for nine years in Tonga Noxie. Lynn has served students at East Heights, New York, and Kennedy Schools as a classroom teacher, Title I reading and math teacher, and as a reading coach. Lynn says that she has always been drawn to work with children in East Lawrence and that her students and the many wonderful staff she has had the privilege of working with have helped her to grow as a teacher and a person. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Lynn. Laura has served the Special Education Department in Lawrence Public Schools for 22 years. She also worked as a Functional Skills Resource Room teacher for two years in Shawnee Mission Schools and a transition specialist for one year in Blue Valley. In our district, Laura has held the titles of Functional Skills Resource Teacher and Work Experience Coordinator at Lawrence High, Community Transition Program Teacher and Vocational Coordinator with the Community Transition or CTRAN Program. Work Experience Coordinator at Free State High School, and now Laura is the Project Search Coordinator with our community partner, Lawrence Memorial Hospital. A self-described outspoken dreamer, Laura says that during her tenure, she has been fortunate to collaborate with an outstanding group of people in our schools, on our transition teams, and in the community. Together, they have restructured the work experience programs at both high schools and built two amazing transition programs, CTRAN and Project Search for young adults 18 to 21. Laura says when times are hard, she wanders out into the community to see one of her young adults that she has worked with now living a happy, healthy, and productive life, and she is inspired again. Thank you, Laura, for your 25 years of service to public education. Kalila Benz. We are also a year behind in recognizing Kalila. She taught three years at Auburn Washburn Middle School before joining the school family at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. There she has taught Spanish I and II, Intro to World Languages Studies Seminar, Family and Consumer Science, and Avid for 23 years. Kalila counts spending those 26 years with middle schoolers, wow, as a highlight of her career. She says that makes, she says they make her smile and laugh every day. She also has taught all four of her own children in Spanish class and has taught in one place long enough to work with extended families and multiple generations and form connected relationships with colleagues. Another highlight for her has been cooking with her students in Spanish class. Kalila recalls a favorite memory of orchestrating a food fight with leftover tortilla dough. She explained to her students some rules for respectful food fighting and was surprised to turn to see Principal Frank Hartwood looking on. She recalls her students being amazed by the food fighting and her justification of the activity to the principal. Best wishes and for more happy memory making, Kalila. Congratulations. John has dedicated 20 of his 25 years in teaching to Lawrence schools. He served students as a speech and language pathologist at more than a dozen schools, including Woodlawn, Grant, New York, the therapeutic high school classroom, West, Southwest, and Sunset Hill, as well as multiple preschool sites around town. He was also a Special Education Resource Teacher at Sunset Hill, Deerfield, and Langston Hughes. Most recently, John has taught third and fourth grades at New York School. The district recently honored John as his Lawrence Master Teacher, and he advanced in the recognition program to earn Kansas Master Teacher honors from Emporia State University. The Lawrence Schools Foundation also recognized John as one of his Educators of the Year. He received the Heart of Service Award during this year's Martin Luther King One Dream Celebration. John says he's never, he never intended to spend his career in public education, but that all changed for him the first week he worked in a public school. He says he saw both the need for change and the opportunity to make a significant difference. John asks that teaching has not been a thankless profession. The appreciation of parents, children, and families continue to mean a great deal to him. He says a phone call from a parent relieved that their child is now reading successfully, seeing a once struggling student make the middle school honor roll, or receiving a handmade note of thanks from a student in the middle of the, in the middle of the school year are the kind of memories he will cherish. Thank you for your positive difference you make in the lives of students and families, John. Paige also is celebrating 26 years in education, including 17 with our schools, where she has served as an American Sign Language teacher at Lawrence High, a speech and language pathologist at Hillcrest, West, Quarterly, and Riverside Schools, and now a district-wide special education facilitator. With LPS, Paige says she has had the opportunity to be a part of the Kansas Infotech Coalition, which focuses on assistive technology needs across the state. She serves as an assistive technology cadre member and has been able to train in the eastern part of the state to help educators learn more about working with students who have special needs. Working district-wide for many years, Paige says she has been able to meet so many people who love working with students and want to help kids as any way they can. Thank you for your continued leadership, Paige. Kitsey Gray. This actually is Kitsey's 27th year teaching. She has served students at Woodlawn, Hillcrest, Kennedy, Centennial, East Heights, Liberty Memorial Central Middle School, and Pinckney. She has taught first and second grades and worked as a title math and reading teacher. Kitsey says she has really enjoyed and appreciated her years in Lawrence Public Schools, where she has had the privilege of working with many wonderful people, especially all of the children she has served. Congratulations and thank you, Kitsey. David Gerosek. David is very proud to have served his entire 25 years' career at West Middle School as the technology teacher. He has worked with students enrolled in world manufacturing, world of construction, drawing, I'm sorry, explorations in technology, exploratory technology, mechanical drawings, and computer applications. He will be teaching the STEM courses of design and modeling as well as robotics and automation starting in the next school year. Dave says his favorite part of teaching is running into former students who are now working in technology careers and have them tell him how important being a Warhawk tech student was in getting them to where they are now. Dave says, David says the worst part of teaching is having a student tell him their parents were also a student of his. Dave, we see that as a badge of honor. You're only as old as you feel, right? Thank you for your continued service to West Middle School. It's appreciated. Is Mark Pruitt here? Okay. Next, we'll have Lori K. Ravioli. Lori's recognition is long overdue. She has been working with students, big and small, for 29 years. She taught at Hilltop Preschool and served as a substitute teacher and parent educator prior to becoming a classroom teacher. She has worked with children at Broken Arrow, Sunset Hill, Schwagler, and now Southwest Middle School. For the past five years, Lori K. has taught social studies to sixth and eighth graders at Southwest. She says she feels lucky to have chosen a career that she loves. She recalls that at conferences this spring, a parent told her, "You make my child enjoy coming to school every day." Lori K. says this is one of the best compliments she's ever received. Thank you for making school a great place for our students to be, Lori K. Julie Rig. Julie has spent all of her 25-year career at Broken Arrow Elementary School. She has taught in the second and third grades there. She also serves on site council, math committee, staff morale committee, the school's equity team, and Broken Arrow's building leadership team. Julie says she feels very fortunate to have spent her entire career at Broken Arrow because it has allowed her to build strong relationships with many families and staff members throughout the year. Some of her favorite memories are when former students come back to visit and share how their teachers at Broken Arrow shaped their careers and choices in their lives. Congratulations on this milestone in your career, Julie. Patricia Salvatore. Pat taught out of state for a year before joining Lawrence Public Schools, where she has served students for 25 years. Pat taught sixth grade for three years at Centennial and seven years at Quail Run. This is her 15th year teaching seventh grade English Language Arts and eighth grade yearbook, newspaper, and civics at Southwest Middle School. She also coached middle school tennis for eight years. Pat cites as a memorable moment the opportunity to travel to LA for a week with five other interdisciplinary colleagues from Quail Run to Simon Wiesenthal Center on a U.S. Department of Education grant in the summer of 1999 to learn how to teach tolerance through literature. She remembers the team being near the ocean but spending their evenings building lesson plans and creating their hyper-studio presentations instead of enjoying the beach. Past years, the disunit was called the Power of One, and the theme emphasized that one person can make a difference in the life of other, of another, and ultimately the community. Pat says that this experience remains as her teaching philosophy today. Pat earned her National Board Certification in 1999 and renewed it in 2009. She has enjoyed being a part of many Folly's Acts over the years with Southwest staff and looks forward to the seventh grade integrated interdisciplinary units at Southwest, including units on Asia and energy. She says her wonderful interdisciplinary colleagues model collaboration every day and make her a better teacher. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Pat. Last but never least, we want to recognize Debbie Woodall Routlich. Debbie celebrates 25 years in teaching, including 23 years in the Lawrence, she taught elementary band at Grant, Quarterly, East Heights, New York, Woodlawn, Quail Run, and Sunflower, and was the assistant band director at Lawrence High. Debbie has served as the band director at Southwest since the school opened. She says she has known since she was in eighth grade that she wanted to be a band teacher. Since her first year at Southwest, the band program has grown from 152 members to 262 members. That's about a third of the school's student population. The Southwest Band has competed 19 times in the prestigious World of Fun Regional Band Competition and has won outstanding band honors numerous times. They were also selected to perform at the Kansas Music Educators Association Conference in 2000. Debbie was accepted into the American Schools Band Directors Association and named the Northeast District Outstanding Middle School Educator in 2012 by the Kansas Music Educators Association. She says she feels fortunate every day to teach in a wonderful place like Lawrence where music is valued throughout the community. She adds that parents, students, fellow teachers, and administrators have helped shape her throughout her journey as a teacher. She counts herself lucky each day for getting to work in the area of her passion, music. One of her favorite memories is when Southwest Band was given a concert at Free State and the lights went out. She says amazingly, the kids kept playing and didn't miss a beat. She says afterwards, some of the parents in the audience thought the blackout was planned. Congratulations, Debbie, and thank you for helping children make beautiful music for Before these 11, shake hands with our school board members. I would like to invite the board and the staff and the audience to join us in one more time congratulating them for 25, and in some cases, 25-plus years of committed service and dedication to the education of our children and youth.
It's always a highlight to recognize our dedicated staff. 25 years, that's impressive. Okay, so we will move on then to our consent agenda. Actually, I'll give it a second. Right. Okay, consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed. Then that item would be voted on separately. We did have one to remove tonight, right? Or did it already happen? Okay. Oh, okay. Great. It's still on here.
But it's still on again.
No, it's, there were actually two. Oh. We're right on top of it. Okay. Wonderful. So we're waiting for another bid that will come later, and that will be next. Yeah. Okay. So I just needed a motion to adopt these items, and then I think we have a recognition for retirement?
Yes, we have one recognition. So I'd like to thank Jeff Hart for his 23 years of service and devotion to the community and its schools. And with that, I'll move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the addition of the administrative personnel recommendation that everybody should have in front of them.
Right. Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Janice.
Harman.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
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 So a report of the President of the Board. So I did want to report that I was able to attend Showtime last Friday, Friday before last. And it was very, very impressive, like always. It's been a tradition with me and my daughter that we've been attending every year, and as she gets older and closer to that age, it's been really fun. So I just wanted to congratulate the choir director and all of the students for some incredibly impressive performances. I mean, sometimes going to one of those things is like, you know, watching like The Voice or American Idol or something. I mean, it seems as though in Lawrence, we have this concentration of highly talented kids that really could go on to do really impressive things with their performance. So with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thanks, Vanessa, and an equally impressive show at Free State. They do encore there and...
Yeah, I didn't make it to that this year.
So both those shows are just fabulous. Congratulations to our high school students, artists, and their teachers. Both high schools have earned numerous art competitive honors, most recently the Lawrence Arts Center Vanguard Awards for 2D and 3D art, and the Congressional Art Award. If you want to see a sampling of some of our visual arts, the annual USD 497 Art Show is on display now at the Lawrence Arts Center through May 14. I always enjoy that. That's, that's really a lot of fun to watch, the little ones and the, as their art progresses as they get older. We have 10 students from our high school who have qualified for National Speech and Debate Tournament in June in Salt Lake City. That's becoming a tradition, has been a tradition for a long time as well. Congratulations to Lawrence High sophomore Jackson Hoy for earning a perfect score on the ACT. All of our second graders will be taking part in health and wellness activities at the fairgrounds on Thursday and Friday, including touring KSDE's Body Venture exhibit and learning about nutrition. A number of community partners are involved with making this event possible, so our thanks to them. Also want to thank staff, students, and families for their great participation last week in Bike to School Day, which was another successful Safe Routes to School activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Board commentary? Seeing none, so we will move on to our first report this evening, which since we've reordered it, is the update on the board goal related to science standards. So I believe Terry McEwen is starting us off there.
I have lots of friends. Good evening. Terry McEwen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. In August, the board established Board Goal One to develop and align district expectations for curriculum and instruction to raise the achievement of all students. Sub-goal 10 was to implement a K-5 field test for new science standards. 11 was to develop and implement Integrated Sixth Grade Science Course Master. 12, develop support plans for implementation of Integrated Seventh and Eighth Grade Science Course Masters. And 13 was to engage high school science departments in the implementation of next-generation science standards. We will now update you on the progress on those particular sub-goals. I'd like to introduce our teacher on special assignment for science, Lizette Burks, and she will take it from here.
Hello. Good evening. This is my second year with Lawrence Public Schools as a teacher on special assignment. And often I get asked, how do I get all the work done that I get done for kindergarten through 12th grade science? And it wouldn't be without the dedicated work that our groups do at elementary, middle, and high school. A large part of my position in the work that I do is working with leadership groups. And these leadership groups are based off of members of each of our grade level bands. Kindergarten through fifth grade is an elementary leadership group. Sixth through eighth grade is our middle school leadership group. And our high school leadership group is comprised of ninth through 12th grade teachers. And so they're just speaking behalf, on the behalf of our work this year in each of those three grade level bands. And so just wanted them to give a little bit about our process. And it's definitely a lot of hard work, so you won't get the big picture of everything we're doing, but just little snippets here and there to kind of see that overall process of the work that we do, so.
Hi, my name is Melissa Roberts. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Schwagler. And some of the main goals of the Science Leadership Committee this year was trying to figure out what programs that we wanted to field test and how we were going to implement them. And then also just being able to fully understand NGSS so that we can help our teachers understand it, understanding each piece of it and how it all works together and how it works within math and language arts. We are represented by every grade level in K through 5. Every school is also represented. And then we have administration, ELL, and SPED on our team as well. And then just our main purpose again is really trying to figure out NGSS, being able to help our teachers understand it, and being able to provide professional development for them.
Hi, I'm Nancy Ornburn, and I teach second grade at New York School. And I'm on the leadership committee, and I've been there for a couple of years. Plus, I also piloted the programs that we chose to look at. And the three programs were FAWSS, TCI, and Inspired by McGraw-Hill. And we, each trimester, we've got a new series and did, followed the curriculum for that semester, tied it together with the new standards. Then we had, at the end of the program, we had a student assessment where the children took an assessment, then they did a survey on that series. And then the teachers did a survey on the series. And then we came back together for the team that was piloting. We would get together and we would compare our notes, and we'd fill out a survey together on the parts that we saw. And I just went through and pulled out some keywords that we were looking for at. If it was culturally relevant artwork, no hidden messages, the character of color being positive, values explicit, and ethically inclusive. So there were some things that we looked at with each of the series.
Hi, I'm Christina Smith. I teach fourth grade at Quail Run. And like Nancy said, the students and teachers that were field testing gave feedback through surveys. And our team analyzed that feedback and the key components of each of the three programs through, we looked at it through a special education lens, an English language learner lens, and an equity lens, and we were able to recommend a program based on our findings. Our goals for next year, once a K through 5 program is purchased, are to create a plan for professional development and also to make sure that teachers are ready to teach the new standards with the help of that new program. And we, each trimester we've got a new series and did, followed the curriculum for that semester, tied it together with the new standards. Then we had, at the end of the program, we had a student assessment where the children took an assessment, then they did a survey on that series. And then the teachers did a survey on the series. And then we came back together for the team that was piloting. We would get together and we would compare our notes and we'd fill out a survey together on the parts that we saw. And I just went through and pulled out some keywords that we were looking for at. If it was culturally relevant artwork, no hidden messages, the character of color being positive, values explicit, and ethically inclusive. So, there were some things that we looked at with each of the series.
Hi, I'm Christina Smith, I teach fourth grade at Quail Run. And like Nancy said, the students and teachers that were field testing gave feedback through surveys. And our team analyzed that feedback and the key components of each of the three programs through, we looked at it through a special education lens, an English language learner lens, and an equity lens, and we were able to recommend a program based on our findings. Our goals for next year, once a K through five program is purchased, are to create a plan for professional development and also to make sure that teachers are ready to teach the new standards with the help of that new program.
My name is Josh Spron, I teach seventh and eighth grade at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. And kind of what our part as the middle school science leadership team has been, has been working obviously with getting integrated with our standards. I think kind of the last two years has really been a focus on, on this moving from a domain science to integrated science. And I think that our, kind of our biggest thing that we are working on now is working on how we can get some planned time for our, for our teachers and our different partners around the district. But also, we really are working kind of at how sixth grade has gone this year and trying to see some of those speed bumps that went along that way and kind of correcting that for the seventh and eighth grade transition. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Anna Busby and I'm a seventh grade science teacher, also I teach at South Middle School. And like Josh, Josh said, we're in this big transition from a domain-based science curriculum to integrated. And so, during our leadership team meetings, we get together and talk a lot about our experiences through that process. Sixth grade is already one year into it, seventh grade we're planning on writing curriculum, Josh and I, this summer for the grade level. And eighth grade is looking with big eyes, wondering how they're going to do it. So, we're all working together, it's super important that we help each other out. We're also dealing with the technology issue, as in middle school we're working, moving to the one-to-one iPad initiative that poses some great opportunities for us, also poses some challenges because we do use equipment quite a bit and we have some equipment that we'd like to keep using. So, we're working that out and it's really important that we keep having our leadership team to help make that transition possible. We share a lot of information, the PD is super important for science at the middle school level. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Georgie and I teach sixth graders at West Middle School. And it was our dive-in year where we went ahead and we worked on our curriculum this summer with the help and the guidance of Lizette, who's, who was awesome during it, trying to build activities and trying to find the materials to support the transition. Talking with the teachers this year, it's been very difficult. We've had our ups and downs and the support that we've given each other and the time that we've been given to kind of help support each other has been very valuable. I would hope that in the future that we're still given the opportunities, we still have a long ways to go with finding the materials and the curriculum to support those standards. So, we're going to need more professional development and we're going to need more time to collaborate with other teachers. The seventh grade teachers, they've taught these standards, so the time that we would need to work with them, I think would, would be very beneficial for that. Overall though, the kids have really enjoyed the difference, the different standards and they've enjoyed the lessons that we've created. They're on Blackboard, it's, it was a course shell that we had worked on this summer and we were incorporating it for the kids this year. So, thank you.
Hello, my name's Alan Goy, I teach Lawrence High School. I'm the high school rep tonight. Couple of years ago, we started getting all the high school teachers together from Free State and Lawrence High. We looked at the standards, what classes that we currently teach and where the standards should be taught. And this year, we really focused on biology, so we have the course master written. And our biology teachers from both schools met four, I think three or four times. We'll be meeting again this week, this Friday. And so, we're looking at specific lessons and how they kind of work with the new standards. And we're going to kind of collaborate with both schools, hopefully may not teach the exact same way, but we'll teach a lot of the same lessons at both high schools. And next year, we're going to focus then on chemistry. And then in a few years, we'll be looking at physics, so it's kind of a three-year plan here for us. Thank you.
These new standards that our teachers talked about today, they really have a lot of power. We used to have standards that only had one dimension, it was the science topic or discipline that you taught. It's now three-dimensional, so there's extra two dimensions. One of them is just about the science and engineering practice. We've had this wide array of different practices that we would employ and as a teacher I could pick and choose which ones those would be. Now, they're a lot more focused and we have eight of those that we're, as a science community, really looking at. And so, the development of those will really transform the way that students are able to weave in and out of those eight practices. And the dimension I find that is going to have a lot of power is cross-cutting concepts. And so, I can look at something through the lens of cause and effect or at patterns. And so, I'm changing through these seven lenses and for that, for students to be able to do that and really analyze different scenarios through those seven lenses, I think is going to be powerful. So, you heard a lot of talking about, I mean, we need resources and whatnot, science is a huge endeavor. I find that I have science events, I've got science curriculum that I work with teachers on, and then we also have science equipment. And so, often I'll get some slack from our other TOCs, you know, you're always asking for things and this, this, and that. And science is a huge endeavor and so I think that's what you heard from our teachers today, is that we've got that huge shift in those new standards and adding two new dimensions on top of the one that we had. And then also that piece of science that is just about, you have to have that equipment, those experiences for students as well. And so, hopefully we're able to show you a little bit about our progress and definitely is a work in progress. And so, you heard a lot of those challenges and a lot of the progress that we've been able to make so far, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Shannon.
So, it sounds like you've, you've landed on probably the K-5 curriculum, is that something that we're going to be seeing pretty soon for approval? Or is that, or is that another year off?
Well, we've landed on the curriculum, in meeting with the, with the representatives from the publisher, we discovered that they weren't quite ready to roll it out. So, they've got it partially done, but not completely done. I always worry about getting a resource that is not complete and putting it in front of teachers because then there's going to be changes that are going to come down the line. And how well will they be able to, you know, respond to those changes? What if they change X, Y, or Z and we aren't prepared for that? So, we're really, we feel that this is a resource that is worth waiting for. And so, we're, we're going to kind of, Lizette has kind of got a plan to get us through next year focusing on the NGSS standards and really building our teachers' understandings about those standards and how to work with them in K-5. And so, she's got a really excellent plan crafted for our Plan B. But I'd really rather not purchase something that is not complete in, in hopes that it will be.
And part of that program, it wasn't that they didn't have the basic components done when we field tested, it was the navigation for teachers, it was really hard to fit all those pieces of a five E lesson engagement, explore, explain, elaborate, evaluate. So, they're fixing a teacher's guide that will help you better navigate through those pieces, it's a lot more explicit. In our field tests, we got a lot of feedback from our field test teachers about that piece being the most that needed to be developed. So, in our leadership team, we took all that information back and we looked at the lens of equity, excellence, and engagement. It really was the best product and it was voted nearly unanimously by our leadership team. So, going back and looking at it, should we go with a different company? It really was hard to be able to do that because it really seemed to fit all the pieces for our school district and by far it was aligned the best to NGSS and the new standards and that vision, so. Waiting game now, so they need to get done quickly.
And I, I hope that, I don't know if we've ever explained to you thoroughly what that process was for this field test. Lizette, being a scientist, designed a really excellent field test so that every teacher in both second and fifth grade who were field testers actually had hands-on with all three resources. So, FOS came first in the fall, first trimester, every, well, all the field testers did that. TCI came next, every teacher did that. And then finally, the, the final resource with McGraw-Hill came to all teachers. So, everybody was able to actually touch and feel and use all of these resources. I think this is a, in my mind, an excellent way to move forward with field testing because what happens is if I put, you know, product X in one school and product Y in another, everybody's going to fall in love with whatever it is that they have, not knowing what everything else is. So, this way, everybody is fully informed and I think this brought this leadership team together with a lot of valuable information and really excellent feedback and inputs.
So, we're hoping to share out more to the board once we get to that process of that company came through with some of the things we were expecting from them and then report more about the surveys that we gave to field test teachers and also to our leadership team and the decision that they came to. So, not quite there yet, but almost cooked.
Thanks.
What, what does the, an adoption look like now versus a couple of years ago? Are we still doing like textbooks and workbooks and that kind of thing, or is it more digital-based, or do we not quite know yet?
A combination of all of that. So, they are providing and creating a lot more digital content and it's a lot more robust digital content than even a couple of years ago when things were just basically PDFs that you could just read online. Now, we actually have more interactive resources, simulations, so that's, that's a huge part of it. There are still some print resources, but the majority of it will be an online resource. Oh, and, coupled with that, because it's science, lots of hands-on kind of activities because kids need to do science, not just read about it.
Kind of broad picture, what's, what's the timeframe that we think that we're going to be able to have this rolled out at elementary, middle, and high school? And what, what are the variables that are impacting that? I mean, some of it's related to the resources we have available to devote to it, but some of it obviously is what's, you know, what industry has available that we can make use of, so, and I guess how does that compare statewide?
At the elementary level, it was a lot easier, as we were talking outside and coming up with our presentation today. Elementary is far, they're just a lot more, they progressed a lot more in what teachers will be able to use as far as the new science standards because they already had their standards portioned out to their grade levels. So, we easily took that, could do PD on it and start looking at publishers that built certain items for us. And publishers seem to start with elementary first and then they're starting to build in middle school and high school. We couldn't wait because that implementation time from the state was three to four years and so we had to start right away. So, some of those are creating our own open education resource, course masters that we've done at the middle school level. So, elementary, I imagine the timeline to be as soon as we get that resource to go ahead and start next year doing PD meanwhile, so that way teachers know how to use that resource to better drive, so you're really hitting those new science standards. At the middle school level, sixth grade and seventh grade are well on their way. Eighth grade, we planned in our leadership team to come up with our support system of unpacking all the standards, making documents of common expectations across all of our middle schools. I imagine that we will have probably two more years before you really see the impact at the middle school level for the reason being that we first had to decide how we wanted to portion out all the science standards. And we made a really big change in leadership to go integrated. And so, the majority of our leadership team at middle school decided, okay, we're, we have these new standards now. Should we keep them life science, physical science, or earth-based science? Or to take all those standards and really put the ones that are sixth grade appropriate at sixth grade? And then you build on those year after year. So, that's what we decided, we created resources ourselves and so we're nitpicking wherever we can to really meet those. And so, it's constant revision for those course masters that we've built. It's kind of been nice not to be underneath a publisher, to make those for us, it helps us cater. There are some places that we still need some support. It's hard to make simulations or find simulations, so often publishers are better at doing those pieces. But we've just been kind of going little by little as we get there. High school is a whole nother ball of wax, as Alan mentioned. And at the high school level, we're given all of the standards and they don't say that you have these for biology, chemistry, physics. They were given to us in life science, physical science, and earth-based science. And they're saying at the state level that all students should be getting all science standards. And that's been different than what we've had before, so it's been a lot of planning because there are definitely be structure changes and we want to make sure that we have the right ones there. So, it's been a little bit slower at the high school level. So, I'm thinking about three years is when we would see more of that impact there. It does seem like a long time, but it really is a lot of discussion on big structure changes for us at the high school.
I have one last question about time devoted to science at the elementary level. And I'm wondering, I know a lot of how we get in, all the content that we need to get in is through kind of integrated approaches that when you're learning in your English time, you're reading about scientific concepts and so there's some weaving that goes on. But it sounds like with the adoption, is, is there going to be more standalone time for science with a particular curriculum? And, or will there still be some of that weaving that goes on in order to, you know?
Both, both. So that science is something that is an absolute content and it is a discipline that, that, that our students will encounter at the elementary school level as a discipline. But we, one of the reasons we're kind of waiting for McGraw to catch up with us is we, what we need the ability to be able to move some things around because what we also want to do is align some of the science, science units with where students are in reading street and they may be reading about, oh, rainforest, something about science, yeah, about science. Reading about science. And then they would have a, a component of the, of the science resource that would then back that up. They would get hands-on activity and it sort of extend that learning to a deeper level. So, it's kind of a both approach.
Yeah, and I see that happening at the middle level and I've been very impressed with my daughter's education in, at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School where they will work together, like the math teacher, the science teacher, and the ELA teacher and social studies teacher all kind of work together to learn about similar concepts at similar times so that you get that integrated approach. And I think that that's really valuable and when you have limited time, it can be helpful. So, it's nice to know that the curriculum works in that way, or can.
Leadership is definitely working towards that. The other thing that I wanted to guard against is we don't want to just read about science and that's all we do.
Right.
And it's also not a substitute for recess. Science is that break from real learning, that we just do hands-on activities, not connected to anything. So, we have to guard against those two extremes and everything in the middle is going to, where it's going to come out.
Oh, yeah, anymore? Shannon?
It sounds like the, the path for the middle school teachers has been a lot more difficult. And I'm kind of wondering, do we anticipate that we're going to have to keep going forward with creating our own content? Or do you think that the, the publishers are going to catch up with, with where we are in this process eventually? Provide materials that are more supportive for what we're doing? Or are we really, really going to need to make sure we're, are we going to have to talk about really beefing up the, the PD support that we are able to provide in that area?
It's hard to tell right now because sixth grade has gone through their first year of integrated with the resources that we built for the course master. They're coming back June 6th to kind of talk about how it went this year. We've been doing that periodically, but now it's been a full year reflection, we'll be able to tell. I can't really speak on their behalf as far as what did work, didn't work, as far as we still need some extra pieces of maybe, the one that I heard the most was a reading resource of some kind, some differentiated levels of having those pieces for students to read about science, it's a lot harder to find those online at the level that we need. I've been seeing more people develop those on their, their own with like online textbooks that teachers create. It's just being able to have the time to find those and then really differentiating those so you have leveled readers for students to get at that piece. So, it's really a work in progress, I'm not sure what pieces we'll need, if we'll need things from publishers or whatnot. It's hard to tell right now with the use of the course master and what pieces are still missing, but we'll be finding out soon from our sixth grade teachers when we meet on June 6th, so, hard to tell right now.
Thank you.
Dr. Dolph?
Couple of comments, one would be on process both statewide and locally. So, this same process is what the state uses when they develop science standards. And Marcel served on that committee statewide, dominated by teachers, as it should be. I mean, not dominated in terms of, dominated in terms of numbers, you know, that are on the committee. And then they bring people in from business and industry and really do work on the standards. It's a very extensive process, I mean, it's, it's, it's good, I mean, it's a good process. Some people may be surprised that, that our teachers are as involved in the curriculum development as they are. In some districts, this isn't how they do it, in some districts it's top-down. They just say to teachers, this is your curriculum, you go teach it, and that's not the way we do it. I mean, at some point, you do have to decide, okay, what, what resource are we going to use? Where are we going to put the standards? And sometimes teachers are not always in agreement with where those go, but they help make that decision. It's not a top-down- decision. It's not a top-down, other than we're doing the standards. We, we do the standards. And so that change process is, is very teacher-dominated, as we should. And sometimes that's hard. I mean, Lizette's job is really tough, you know, to get science teachers in general. And then do you talk about high school science teachers? And God, I love them. But, you know, high school science teachers are subject-oriented. And so when you start talking about integrated science, that's hard. That's, and you know, so Lizette's right. That's going to be a, a tough nut to crack. The other thing I want to say is that our TOSA positions have become breeding grounds for leadership. You just hired Philip Tis to be the principal at Quail Run, brought him in as a TOSA. Lizette, unfortunately, is going to go to work, go work for KSDE next year. They certainly recognized her talent as well. Have several other examples of people that we brought in, sometimes inside up, you know, promotions inside, sometimes people that we brought in from the outside. But it's interesting how our TOSA's have really become a breeding ground for some really strong leadership. And we, we appreciate that, Lizette and others, and look for that model to continue. And remember, they're hired as teachers. They're teachers on special assignment. Those used to be administrative positions, and that was a conscious decision on our part to put practicing teachers in the curriculum development and course development process. And it's working, but Lizette, I think, would tell you, it's also challenging because they're teacher leaders. She's leading, hurting these, these group of science teachers. And so it's tough. But we think it's the right model. We think it's the right model. And we're sorry to lose Lizette, but we also know that when you build leadership, sometimes she may come back to us in a different role someday. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. I think that's what's important about these positions is that in order to have something sustained year after year, since these are two-year positions as a teacher on special assignment, without leadership groups that have their own goals and their own mission, someone coming in as a teacher on special assignment, it would be starting over and starting over. It's really important to develop those leadership teams to do that. So that's been instrumental. And I think them getting the support that they need, it's not really me, it's their voices that I represent whenever I ask for support. So.
Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your time this evening. I know you've had a long day already. Okay. So then we'll move on to the last report this evening, which is the update on Board Goal 1.4, which is personalized learning in a blended environment.
I just wanted to hear you say my last name.
Oh, with Angelique Nedved.
Good job, good job. Okay.
Good evening. Angelique Nedved, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. And tonight's board report is a follow-up to the board report from a couple of months ago on the implementation of blended learning and some questions that you provided us. So a follow-up to that and hopefully some information that helps answer some of those questions. So I'm going to start us out with the beginning, where we started. And two questions that really led and guided our field test in the fall of 2012 with eight teachers. So tonight's report's really going to explore the why and what we've accomplished since starting. And we want to recognize that while blended or personalized learning might be a buzzword out there that you're hearing a lot about, we know that buzzwords are not quick solutions to complex questions. So you see up here that, starting with 2013, the implementation of personalized learning in a blended environment has been a board goal each and every year. So let's start out with our challenges and enhancements that have come about recognizing challenges. One of our first that came up pretty quickly was a continuous grade progression for our students. So we decided to trade one opportunity for another. And the opportunity we traded was for a student to have a progressive succession of experience through a blended classroom, either grade by grade, or content by content, or class by class. We felt that implementing this on a teacher opt-in opportunity would be much more successful. We felt that the adoption success would be healthier and that we would gain that critical mass. Plus, we would be developing some internal leaders that could be then the models for their peers. That's really important to see your peers experiencing success. For some of our staff who would rather not take that step yet, it's just not their time, they're not ready. We wanted to honor that. With that came some challenges. We continue to hear from parents, what will my student do next year when they move from a blended to a non-blended? And we understand that, but as we've progressed, we have held pretty tight to honoring when the teacher is ready. So that's one of the challenges we really haven't overcome. We don't really have an enhancement for that, but it's a decision that we made early on and that we stand by. As a result of a non-continuous grade progression, we don't have the longitudinal data collection opportunity. That is one challenge that we've been able to overcome because we have some tools in place that we can collect specific student data over time versus following a cohort. We've been able to overcome that challenge. So it's been less of one, but it is one that I wanted to share. The definition is listed here third, and I wanted to share that with you. In the very beginning, 2012, 2013, we got a lot of requests for definition, even ourselves. How do we define blended learning? What does it look like in Lawrence Public Schools? We are not a district that takes a program off the shelf, opens the box, and just puts it into implementation. We really have a feeling of, we need to try it on, we need to make it fit our circumstance, our students, our curriculum, our outcomes, our community. So it took us about two and a half years to develop a definition. And after some international searching, some professional reading, we landed on what you will find. And I just took us to the district-wide website and the page that specifically lists resources, information about blended learning. You'll see a definition that we collectively created and that we feel we can stand by now to share with staff, to share with the community, that this defines what this implementation looks like in our district. I think it's important to read the very first sentence. "An effective blended environment combines the best of traditional instruction with online and digital media to deliver personalized learning." So while blended learning for some people means that everything we do really well as teachers goes away, and it doesn't. And I want to be sure that you, you hear that, that it is the best of traditional instruction. And it's combined with digital content. It's combined with how can we engage students with those online tools that they're already maximizing. And that's really in the teacher's hands. So while we have landed on a definition, we have not developed a recipe. We have not said, you're going to blend for half of a day, you're going to blend these certain contents. That remains the autonomy of the teacher. The teacher remains in full control. And what we have seen over the past four years, while a teacher may start with a lesson, or a unit, or a particular class, by the end of the year, they have experienced quite a bit of success. So it ends up being the entire day. Not every single teacher has that kind of experience. They do it more by class. But predominantly, that's what I'm hearing amongst the teachers. Let's go on to one of our next challenges that's been recognized. Consistency with the LMS. LMS is the acronym for a learning management system. The one that the, the board approved to purchase back in 2013 was Blackboard. At that time, Blackboard happened to have the tools and enhancements that our teachers appreciated. One of the most important ones was the mathematical notification or the mathematical notation within the program. It was important for our staff, particularly our math staff, to be able to use the functionality of math and the symbols for it versus writing out the words. And many of the tools at that time weren't able to do that. So we were writing math problems and we were spelling out sine and cosine versus being able to use the mathematical notation for that. Many tools have come on board or been enhanced since then. One of the favorites of our teachers is Google Classroom. At the time that we purchased Blackboard, Google Classroom wasn't even ready to launch. In fact, it launched in 2014 on August 12th, and we were already a year into our implementation. While you can blend and personalize learning without a learning management system, it certainly adds more efficiencies for the teacher so they can implement this instructional strategy in their classroom much more efficiently. Optimizing furniture selections.
Angelique, can I interrupt there as well?
Sure.
I think the board should also be aware of the challenges. So if we forced everybody to use the same LMS, that's not very Lawrence-like. You know what I mean? Forcing everybody to do exactly the same thing. And so we have loosened that up. And so we do have teachers that are blending, that are using Google Classroom, and maybe even some other platforms.
Edmodo, Moodle.
The challenge with that that you should be aware of is that then we hear from parents, oh my God, my English teacher's using this LMS, and my social studies teacher's this, and this, and I don't know the login. And it gets confusing. I don't know what the solution is, because there's downsides to both ways of doing that. But that's got a challenge. That's a very real challenge that's out there. And I don't know exactly where we'll land on that. But early on, we were pretty assertive about, let's use Blackboard, because those first eight, and then the next 50 or so. But we have loosened up, which has made teachers happier, I guess, but has caused some problems for kids and for parents in terms of logging on. So just be aware of that as we move forward.
Can I ask another question about that? So what about district support? Like when the TOSA's build a course shell, is it always in Blackboard?
Yes.
And then are you able to pull content to load it into Google Classroom?
Good question. So where our guardrails are, we will provide professional development for blended and personalized learning. But the tool we will use as a district, from the district's perspective as far as facilitating those sessions, is the LMS Blackboard. When we build a course masters, like you heard Josh and Anna and Lizette talk about, those are built within Blackboard. Now, a staff member can go into Blackboard, since all of us have access to it, pull the content from there, and put it into then their LMS of choice. Jill, did you have a question?
Well, I guess maybe it was an observation that may or may not be accurate.
Okay.
But it seems, you know, you were talking about parent management. My experience, maybe it's just the age that my kid has hit when we're, when we're changing platforms. Nearly middle school, parents don't get in to manage or to get into Blackboard or Google Docs. That's really kind of a kid's responsibility. And, and they seem to be okay. I mean, my, my experience has been with different LMSs, it's not an issue. I mean, I don't think, I know any parents that have gone into Blackboard to check stuff or gone into Google Docs because, you know, it's kind of your thing.
Right.
Unless they come to you with help and they've already been logged in. So I don't really see, I mean, it's just a little microcosm.
Keep, keep your ears open on that one, though. We have, and so, I mean, not, people aren't revolting or anything, but we have in terms of it just being confusing. But keep your, so keep your ears open. I think eventually, well, I don't know where we'll end up on that one.
Well, it was certainly an area I wanted to highlight as a challenge because it's helped us grow over the course of implementation. Because you don't start out with a defined recipe. We didn't have the specific list of, you know, here's how we lay this out. These were lessons learned along the way. And one of the enhancements we've made is now that other tools are out there and available, certainly, you know, encouraging staff to select the one that best suits their needs. Now, we do provide that with some information. For example, the integration between Blackboard as an LMS has an auto-grade function within it. Several LMSs do, so that's not new. However, the uniqueness comes to integrate that into our SIS, our Student Information System, which is Skyward automatically. So that relieves a teacher of having to hand-enter grades into Skyward, something that's in Blackboard. You wouldn't find that functionality without a pay-for-purchase tool from a vendor in a free option. So there are some, there are some bells and whistles that come with Blackboard. But again, the teacher is selecting and they're personalizing, I think, their instruction by selecting the tool of choice. Let's move on down the list of challenges. Optimizing furniture selections. In the beginning, trying to figure out, as we added 40 more classrooms the second year, two in each building, we were taking on the full grade span, K through 12. Body sizes change, room dimensions change. So we were trying to standardize what type of furniture we would provide and switch out. And it was also a cost benefit and an efficiency for operations as we standardized the equipment going into the rooms and the furniture versus having, you know, multiple options. They could get furniture in and out quickly because we had a standardized set. This year, one of the enhancements we've made and expanded to our menu of items, we have different size round tables, kidney versus half circles. We're adding a tall, kind of cafe-style table to our middle and high school options. If a teacher wanted something where students can stand. It also has a writable surface, so it has a whiteboard as the tabletop for students to do some problem solving. But that's been popular in the little pockets where we've tried it out. So we're going to add that as a menu item for our secondary schools. Availability of content. You heard a little bit about this in the previous report on science. When we started in 2012, 2013, digital content was just expanding. And as Terry mentioned, many of the publishers were simply taking their, their paper content and moving it into a website and calling it, you know, digital media. But it was just a list of PDFs or worksheets that had now been digitized. Over the past four years, publishers have really expanded the capability with activities and discussions and more rigorous information. So our ability to provide more content has expanded as well. So we're kind of going along hand-in-hand with that. But what we also recognized is we couldn't keep up with the demand from our teachers for more and more digital content needed, which is why we now offer a supplemental contract to our staff. Josh and Anna were just up here. They'll be writing the seventh grade course master, and they receive compensation for that. But we felt why not utilize the skills of our staff if they're interested to provide that type of resource for their peers? And that's really helped us out. So we have about 15 course masters now staff-authored that are shared across the district. And it's helped us out. So that's an enhancement to one of the challenges realized. And then personalized professional development. As we continue to grow the scale of staff involved, we're now over 400. How do we personalize that professional development? We have staff coming in in their first year, knowing very little. We have staff going into their fifth year, implementing this now across many years, and wanting to know more and go deeper with their instructional strategies. So it pushes us to continue to enhance. We just had a meeting today. Dr. Mike Hock from the Center for Research on Learning is in the, the audience. And I told him I would call him out. We were talking today. KU has developed a, a course master, shall we say, for blended learning. And we're going to be talking about how we can implement that as a, as a resource. So we're going to move into student achievement. The question we hear a lot in teaching and learning is, does blended learning work? Well, I think that we need to take it further than that. We wouldn't say, do textbooks work? Or does lecture work? All of those things work, given the context and if it's the right tool for the student. So the student achievement that we've been able to pull together, and again, remember that was one of our challenges because we don't have the longitudinal data. So we selected fifth and seventh grade predominantly, two different grade bands, but also a high number of blended classrooms at both of those grades. And then English Language Arts and Math were the two contents we focused on. So under each content area, you will see the district median, the average across the district for that grade level, but then also the blended median. The district does include the blended classrooms. So that would be all of those classrooms at that grade level. Blended strictly focuses on the classrooms that were involved in this initiative. So you have a fall-to-spring difference. And these are MAP scores, our measures of academic progress. And you'll see the difference in there. And significance is measured in this by a plus or minus of three. So I'm going to give you a little bit of time to take a look at that.
So I had to call Angelique today and have her explain this. So, so fall, so take fifth grade district median. So the fall score, median score for all fifth graders in ELA was 214. That's just a score on the MAP test.
Mm-hmm.
And when they retested those kids in the spring, they grew by five points. And remember, that does include the blended kids as well. We didn't pull those out.
Correct.
So in the fall of, of, of that year, now I'm getting, getting confused here.
Okay. So when you go to?
Yeah, okay.
I'll jump in and save you.
So they started in the blended, let me do it, let me do it.
Okay.
So the
We practiced.
The blended kids started at 217, which was a little bit higher by chance. They don't always start higher than the district group, but in this case, they did. And they grew by eight to 225. So that was, Angelique had to walk me through that.
Yeah. And what's exciting is to see this pattern across pretty much the entire chart. So again, the level of significance is plus or minus three. So then we have a hypothesis with this. Our students in a blended classroom, we feel, are developing more of a student agency. And it's not that student agency doesn't exist in a classroom with less blended characteristics, but it's a highlight of professional development and how to really develop that student agency with our students. So that's students' choice. And how are they taking control of their own learning? So we think there's a direct correlation with the student achievement when student agency takes a stronger role in the classroom.
So, Angelique?
So, Angelique, why the decision not to pull out the blended from the district median?
We could. This is just one way that we chose to depict it. I'm happy to pull that out from the district and just kind of see where that falls because it does elevate it just a little bit, so we can certainly do that.
Well, right. I think it's just a, it's a more accurate picture.
Okay.
Because, well, you have confounded groups, but, so I would be curious.
Just to see what that, that range is?
Yeah.
Okay. One thing I do want to point out, even though MAP scores provide us a measure of student academic growth, I think it's really important to keep in mind, true student achievement is more importantly measured by the teachers in our classroom and what they're seeing every day. And that's a variety of methods and factors. For example, when a teacher can observe a student who can collaboratively work with their peers, a student whose decisions and choices are productive and successful, and a student who is authentically engaged in learning. We feel that that is a truer and deeper definition of student achievement than simply an academic point in time. So, while we have collected student achievement data, a question that's come up is, do we survey people involved in the blended learning classrooms? And we absolutely do. Starting with our original eight, I wanted to show you the progression over time. So, the blue bar is 2013, the green is 14, the yellow is 15. And when we get to the teacher survey, you'll see one more bar on there, red, for 2016. But we'll focus on the parents right now. And we took two questions out of the set of eight. If you're interested in all eight, I'm happy to share that with you. And just focused on the agree or strongly agree, and two questions specifically with our parents. So, what does homework time look like? And does it look, feel different now that your students are in a blended classroom? And then as a parent, I see positive benefits to having blended learning in my son or daughter's classroom. I also included the N. I wanted you to see the number of parents surveyed across time continuing to grow. So, as our scale increases, what, what we have been pleased by is that the positive response to that type of question. One thing, too, I'd like to add is that while the, while it's typical for normal distribution of the population, the stability is still noteworthy, given that scale increase. And then I'll point out some other interesting things as we go through the, the student and the teacher survey. So, the same type of approach, 13, 14, 15, across the bottom, the N is listed on the front of the bar. The two questions here, "Blended learning model matches how I like to learn, and I'm able to communicate with my teacher more regularly because of blended learning." Again, we're only looking at agree and strongly agree across three years. Our N in 15 was nearly 1,500 students. And we are currently in the process of collecting that data from our students for the 16-year. Overall, we survey our teachers every six weeks to quarter. We survey our students each semester, and then our parents in the spring. The teacher surveys. You can see we now have a collection of, across four years. And that first one takes us back to that original question that guided our field test in the beginning. "Blended learning has increased student engagement." So, one of our initial questions, indeed maintaining a high response across four years. So, that, that was exciting for us. And then the second question we focused on was back to that achievement. And increasing is measured by assessments at the end of the lesson, the chapter, or the unit. So, putting the state assessment aside, putting the, the MAP assessment aside, it's important to note that those nationally-normed assessments, like you saw previously, these are the assessments that are classroom-based, classroom-created, and classroom-selected. To finish off the report, I wanted to highlight, because of the success of our teachers, because of the, the hard work, the risk-taking, the ability and the opportunity our teachers have taken to really embrace this in their classrooms, again, voluntary basis coming onboard when they feel they're ready. We've had some research partnerships show up, as well as some recognition, and I wanted to highlight those. Currently, we have two research projects with the Center for Research on Learning through KU. And again, Dr. Hock is in the crowd here. One focuses on students with IEPs and the ability to reach their goals better in an environment where student agency is strengthened. And then the second one was creating that blended learning module as either a pre-service tool or a tool to enhance the professional development of our, of our current practicing staff. A request for partnership with the University of Washington. Seattle Public Schools sent six staff members out two weeks ago to observe for four days, and they walked through about 25 classrooms, spent time with teaching and learning staff, some teachers, some principals, and then the TOSA position, and really talked about what they were seeing here to take back into Seattle Public Schools and how to replicate it there. One of the staff members also works with the University of Washington as a researcher. So, she called us the day after she left and said that she's very interested in engaging with us to learn about leadership and change, and how you lead change as you're learning about the implementation of a new strategy. Dissertation topics. This was a surprise when I had it culminated. I didn't realize we had so many as a focus for the paper. One has been completed and affirmed by the committee, and that would be Dr. Comfort at Schwegler Elementary. He focused on specifically Lawrence Public Schools in fifth grade math and language arts. And the question was, "To what extent do student test scores vary in relation to the amount of exposure to blended instruction?" And he found a significant increase with fifth grade results. Then there are three other dissertations in the works where we are part of the model. Then some international recognition. So, INACOL, the International Organization for Online and Blended Learning, in our own Paula Bar, second grade at Quail Run, was recognized and featured as a guest lecturer in a trip to Beijing for 10 days as she shared what it looks like in her classroom with colleagues and delegates from across the globe. So, that's been pretty exciting, and I think that list up there is a direct result of the commitment of our teachers. So, I thank them for what I feel has been a positive implementation. Questions? Yeah, Rick?
So, really, a comment, I might quibble with you a little bit about the meaningfulness of some of the data, but I do want to, you know, express my appreciation for the fact that this is data-focused and that, you know, we have this program that we all think was really good. It's nice to see that the data actually support that. So, I just want to express my appreciation
Thank you.
for that.
Thank you. And I thank our staff for taking so many surveys to share with us. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much for the update, and I appreciate all of your work to help champion this really good initiative. That's
Appreciate the board's support. It started with you in 2000, 2012, so thank you.
Right. Okay. I believe that's our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.